Is our video working?
We're working on it.
Hey, do I need to have this on to here?
Yes, yes, because it's really hard to hear when I come back in a few minutes.
Okay. All right, good evening, everybody. We call the regular meeting of August sixteenth, twenty twenty-three of the South Forker. And for the order, now everybody stands and they'll play the lead just. So as I said, good evening, everybody, and Aaron will recognize you spoke at our board tonight. And without being said, is there any other comment? Uh, has anybody in the public here would like us to know? If none, anybody in the Zoom, anybody in the new world have comments or something that they'd like to work out? Okay, see none, we're gonna.
That's a good see.
Oh, hi Jess, go ahead.
Hey, guys, sorry, thank you so much. Jessica's here, thirty-seven Academy Street, South Berwick. Um, I just, I am kind of representing the Comprehensive Plan Committee. Uh, I wanted to let you all know that we are in the process of drafting our goals, policies, and strategies, and that we are chugging along on schedule to um provide a finished comprehensive plan towards the end of the year, early twenty twenty-four. Um, so just wanted to make you all aware for some transparency and some communication up from the different boards. Have a great uh meeting and thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate that information. Uh, that will actually in front of the board quite well in with our direction for seeking some professional assistance uh for rewriting. That's the code here to have so that's good information to thank you. Anybody else who do? All right, uh, so let's go down to the approval of the minutes here. I'm gonna have to go through the one by one here because we were able to act on some but not others, uh, given the ownership of the board, uh, having changed. Uh, I understand it may be a little out of order, but if you believe here, uh, the meeting on age two or last meeting, uh, I was here, Aaron, you were here, and Hershey, you would be a Zoom. So I'm gonna ask for a motion. Go ahead.
I motion my name is spelled correctly and also that I have not missed this. Uh, so line sixty-five and also next page one oh one and one ten, just do a search and find and replace one nineteen.
Say it clean back here.
I know, I I will have faith that it will get cleaned up.
You got that.
Thanks, I did.
So myself, Aaron, and Hershey, you can vote on those. And so is there a motion as amended by Hershey?
My motion, we accept the minutes of stated with the amendment, you also speak.
Okay, then move.
I second.
Great, okay, discussion over favor. Uh, we'll go over tonight, on favor to say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we should have to speak you. Uh, let's move on to the next one in order here. If we can get some of this stuff away, this is made third, we have the main third minute. We went through this last week. This one where I was here, Hershey was here.
Big public area.
Yeah, and no one else was here, so we built, you know, half out of those. We'll have to coordinate that. No, I don't have a great key.
Okay.
Uh, so that was the third, let's go to June seventh. You know, we got another hearing. If you're, who was here?
Oh, I was here. Oh, once again, seven, line seventy-two.
Line seventy-two, on which one, I'm sorry, six-seven?
Yeah, so, and we're just do a kind of replace and then.
Okay, so.
Four-eight.
So we can act on these two minutes here from June seventh. Bill, uh, myself, Hershey, do we have a motion on June seventh?
I motion, we accept the minutes of the amendments stated in the correct light theme and title.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, June seventh is done, June twenty-first. June twenty-first, I was here, Bill was here, and Aaron, you were here. And Hershey, you were asked, so we have an amendment to take down, so that we motion for June twenty-eighth first.
Well, that's your names, your names both present.
No.
For that thing.
No, it is not. Their names have definitely been corrected.
Gotcha.
So with that being said, is there a motion to the amendment of six twenty-one, from the bill, myself, and Aaron? A motion to approve the amended amendments for the next two hours, any to move?
Oh, Stein Howard's spelled wrong. One twenty-four, pretty sure that's, you know, S T A P I N H A U E R.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, and seven, sorry, twenty-four.
Yeah, one one two.
Okay, the motion's been made, amended for.
Second.
Sorry, all in favor, Aaron, okay, motion done. All right, so first item of new business tonight will be hearing uh from Denise, yeah, please Denise, and this brother is on the. Now that's important, presentation, and with that, I'll hand it over to you Denise, we can go from there.
Thank you, Chair. Um, my name is Denise, I'm Director of Economic Development here at the town of South Berwick. One of the things that we wanted to do right out of the gate was to uh influence services in the south. Do a complete depth part of analysis to give the data that we're driving decisions on goal, policies, strategies moving forward. Um, so happy to have with us here in the state, where I consider one of the countries that grew an economic development, who happens to side in the state. Maybe some of their company is out of New York, uh, point institutes. Um, and Jim has worked in many, many communities all over the country, quite many, and they've been similar analysis to the communities of this size. Uh, so very good for us with that inspiration. Um, and let's turn this over to Jim Denise's. And um, we'll walk us through this presentation on supplementing obviously the five hundred plus page report that will guide us. So watch the second. Um, my apologies, so um, at this point, I'll turn it over to Jim, and uh, thank you for that.
Great, thank you, Denise. Um, so what I think is possible is I can walk through the presentation and then uh hold the questions till after, unless there's something that's critical, I'm just there to stop and deal with that.
I have been, yep.
Yeah, and I'll I'll give the high level overview, uh, God, I think you had incentive for it, you brought it in PowerPoint. So we made a similar presentation to the council, uh, oh boy, it's been about a month and a half or so, maybe two. Um, but I'm Jim Denise's, um, next slide. So I will, Denise, we're very kind to talk about the company, but I just work for the people at home and so forth, I just want to know, want you to know. So my company is Compoint Associates. Again, we work all over the country, a lot here in Maine, including Southern Maine, and we've been in business over twenty-three years. Uh, next slide. So I wanted to talk a little bit about like why do a market analysis and an economic specifically for economic development? Uh, because it comes up a lot, it's like sometimes you do a specific market analysis for one property or particular part of a community. But in this particular case, we did a full market analysis to understand the challenges and opportunities going forward in the community for economic growth prosperity. So what does that mean? So in other words, you do, you do this kind of work to a make the community more uh resilient in terms of local businesses, so. Uh, the economy goes up and down, that has impacts on businesses, that impacts certain businesses one way, it may impact another business another way. So looking at how the markets are changing and what impacts are being on businesses and what the future opportunities are. It also is really important to have support, a good quality of life and place to live. Essentially for workers, essentially for residents and taxpayers of the community. Having a healthy community provides a healthy economic community, helps provide options for recreating, for places to go, places to shop, and things like that. Uh, and that is, it's also important to understand local demand and how you can keep dollars local. So it's one thing to have a really good regional economy, and the regional economy in Southern Maine is very good. Uh, and uh, but you also want to be able to have some of those resources to stay here local in terms of opportunities for new businesses and supporting businesses that exist here in the in the town. Uh, and that helps to strengthen the tax base, so uh particularly on the commercial side of 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 growth. It helps offset some of the population growth, it helps offset some of the burden on residents and taxpayers by having a healthy balance of businesses, um, and a diversity of businesses. And then finally, uh, when done well, it creates prosperity and opportunity for residents. Could be in the form of a job, a place to go, or also a way to start a business and become a, be an entrepreneur. Next slide. So we, we did a lot of work uh to look at uh the assets and opportunities. And what I'll do, I don't want to present those, but I just want to make sure that you understand some of the work that we did. So we did, uh, this is the results, these findings are based on a combination of lots of economic analysis. So yeah, we have data, we get from the community, from the state, plus our own sources on real estate, workforce, industry, those kinds of things. So we put that together with a lot of detailed interviews and what I would call small group discussions. So we, uh, Denise and staff helped, still helped organize those. And then we had some very robust conversations with different kinds of stakeholders, and in particular, property owners in the business that own businesses, but also businesses themselves and people that uh that either A have been here for a while, plus some new businesses as well. And then we also based it on further research into best practices and what other communities are doing and things like that. So what did we find high level? Uh, the, there's, and and as you know, you know this, you live here, you're on the planning board, but it's a great community, there's a lot of positives here. There's people that want to be here and there's businesses that want to be here too. And they're a great small business community, they know each other, they're connected. It's a place where people want to live and they want to live here for a variety of reasons. They want to live here because it gives them a sense of small community, bit of ruralness, but it's not completely disconnected from other kinds of activity. It's close by, but it's far enough to give you a sense of a small community, we kept erring that over and over again. And then it's also got a really good school system in terms of desirable schools and options for schools, and it's well known. And that's a big driver of hope in terms of where people want to live or where businesses want to be as well. And then, and I already mentioned, but it's got that small town feel of the charm. Uh, the opportunities, um, there's quite a few in the report, but I really wanted to focus on some that um quite frankly specifically have a lot to do with the planning and menus. Uh, and one is, it's already been mentioned, I um tonight at this meeting, but talking about the comprehensive plan process. So this document and the information contained in it is is supplemented in a way to the comp plan process. There's a lot of stuff that goes into the comp plan process, as you know, on environment, different inventories, but there's also an acknowledgement section. And this is the kind of information I can feed into that in terms of what's the, what's the makeup of the economy and what are the future opportunities and what are the different kinds of real estate and the markets around them. Uh, and it's really important that that be integrated so that they're working together uh to have a positive impact on the community. Uh, secondly, the opportunities are, um, there is a lot of good opportunity in the region, however, the region does what I would call leak out a lot of economic activity. In other words, people, a lot of people travel to other places for, and a lot of people travel to other places to shop. And that's okay, that's normal, and that happens in communities in terms of some people leave, some people go here for one time a store. However, if you can capture some of that so that you keep more of those dollars local, that's a really big opportunity. And businesses are more likely to be able to be resilient and sustain if they continue to grow the local market. It's not necess, it's not known as a regional destination or a regional market, and you probably don't want to build yourself up to be that big anyway. But the more that you can do to have certain kinds of things, groceries, pharmacies, restaurants, those kinds of things here locally, the more you can keep the dollars here, the more the tax base, and there seems to be some opportunities to do that uh based on the market analysis. And then finally, um, in terms of specifics for economic growth uh outside of the residential, uh, there's, there's specific opportunities for areas in the community, and I'm gonna go through those in the next slide. But essentially, there's an opportunity along the two thirty-six corridor, which I'll talk about, and also with the downtown as well, for the main street, next slide. So about the downtown, uh, I'm not gonna go through every single bullet point, I'm gonna hit some of the high highlights. But but, um, and I'll deal with the challenges first and then I'll end with the opportunities and the strengths. Uh, so the, um, you, you're all familiar and, but I just need to document that, you know, traffic congestion is a problem at certain times of day, um, and then parking always seems to be a problem. And sometimes parking is also a perceived problem, everybody would like to have more parking in front of their store, they don't like to walk as much. But also, there's also some real parking issues at certain times of the day as well. The, um, there is a bit of a need of an upgrade to what I call the downtown infrastructure, if you will, with the sods um and sidewalks, sort of a sprucing up, if you will, but also looking at in terms of of long-term well-being, making it more resilient for the future extension. And then finally, um, signage and wayfinding and lack of cohesive vision. So I just want to say that, um, you have something that's, that's very difficult to recreate. There's a lot of places in Maine and in New England and throughout the country that would love to have a main street that's local and charming, but it's really important to keep it up. So the good news is, is that you have it. The challenge is that it constantly needs reinvestment, and it's definitely out of time for reinvestment. And that's also why you might be seeing some of the vacancies and things like that, it's not the only reason, but it can definitely help by making it more walkable, making it easier to get around, understanding those there and things like that. So some of those strengths that you have, um, you are in the process of considering doing a downtown development plan, a revitalization plan, and that would draw arm and go, but go in deeper to some of the information that we have here, and more specifically, a kind uh, it would outline the kinds of investments, physical investments in the downtown area, and also what they might look like if they were to occur, and then also like your engineering around, um, what's gonna take to upgrade the infrastructure and things like that. But in terms of other strengths, the uh business community downtown is really engaged. Uh, they know each other, they're willing to get involved, and they, it was very clear when we talked to them as a group and across multiple different groups. You do have a tax increment finance district that covers the downtown area, and it's also known as a transportation for you bit. Development tip, in other words, that becomes a financial tool to capture some of the future growth revenues and reinvest into the community. Um, and then there's definitely market demand uh out there, again, not for everything that's out there where you cross the border and go into the larger communities in uh in New Hampshire or drive towards the coast or um, those kinds of things, but for additional retail, restaurants, businesses, and personal service, business and personal services like. You can get those services in other places, but a lot of times people want to support it here. Things like your banks, things like your pharmacies, things like your insurance companies that are small um and and professional services like engineering firms and professional firms. Next. Uh, let's talk a little bit about the two thirty-six corridor, that's the primary corridor where you have um, both the amount of traffic, but also the land, um, and the infrastructure somewhat for future development. Uh, but it's got some challenges, it is, um, as you know, fronted by, a good portion of it is fronted by the central main power corridor. Um, and the only thing I, reason I mention that is sometimes it looks, it gives you a sense of, it, it, it looks like that those properties are cut off from economic activity, even though they might not be. In other words, you can access them like at Pumpkin Town and so forth, but the corridor kind of dominates in terms of the visual, and it's also therefore something that businesses and property owners have to overcome. Um, Pumpkin Town itself, we looked a lot at and talked to property owners there and also talked to other stakeholders. Uh, and it, it's being developed, and there's already businesses there, in fact, there's some recent business. Uh, but it is on a major slope, so it does add cost and it does have limitation in terms of what can be done. Uh, there is a lack of, and I want to make sure I have this right, but but it's, it's a lack of public water and sewer in that area. And then water is a particular issue if you're trying to have any kind of substantial business where if you put up other alternative water that turns on site, you then have to have it regularly tested, that adds another cost. So it's a real limit in terms of businesses that can say, hey, let me locate there and I'll deal with the water and even though there's no public water that's available. Uh, in terms of zoning, uh, it's, a lot of it is zone residential and not mixed-use residential. Uh, and so that's a big recommendation of this is that what we're finding in best practices is the more you can open up um, commercial opportunities by having mixed-use development. That gives landowners and developers some ability to uh both do commercial but also hedge the whole investment against having some market opportunities in residential as well. And it also helps create market for their businesses and their retail places and service places and things like that. So mixed use is a real big opportunity, it's high in demand in the market. And then, um, there is a, there is a bit of an issue with the lack of traffic lane on two thirty-six, which hinders growth and access to Pumpkin Town, particularly uh at at times of day when schools getting out and things like that. Uh, so the opportunities, uh, there is a lot of land area for development, there is willing property owners, so that's a huge benefit. There are a lot of times when you have a growth corridor, but the property is owned by out-of-state people or people that are just not interested in developing their own land, but you have willing property owners. Uh, and then, uh, there are existing businesses already located there, so there is a model. In other words, it's not just plain land, and you've got to tell people that, hey, this could be a future for, for businesses, there's already business there. Uh, there is a good amount, even though the traffic can be tough at times in terms of like the traffic lane. Uh, it is providing a corridor with demand essentially and a way to get to and from work. Uh, it is adjacent to a land trust, um, in terms of providing amenity access in a place where if you have a business or you're having mixed-use development, you have a natural amenity to grow commercially, but also provide open space and recreation and that. And then, and the, uh, it is in an existing tax increment financing district like the downtown, which provides a vehicle for supporting private financing uh and public financing. And then, um, the key is gonna be to rezone appropriate land areas along the two thirty-six corridor to make sure that you can have commercial, industrial, and mixed use. In terms of what the opportunities are here, it's not, I want to be clear, sometimes when people think economic development, they're thinking, hey, what, you know, I don't want all these gigantic companies coming in with Bigfoot friends and things like that. You don't really have that kind of space or market here, it's much smaller space, and that includes like your flex space. So someone might come in, they might have a building where it could support fifty thousand square foot of development, but someone might want eight thousand square foot of light industrial, and someone else might want twelve, and the person who has twelve might want to expand to twenty-five with the market growth, that kind of thing. And that's high in demand here in, in, in South Berwick, but it's also in demand in Southern Maine market and hard to find. Uh, the construction industry, um, is still booming and, uh, in terms of what's going on, not just here, but also all over Southern Maine. And those businesses are also located here, and there's an opportunity to have some of them expand and have more of their equipment here or offices be here instead of being located in other parts of Southern Maine, and you're serving basically the whole Southern East and coastal part of, of New Hampshire as well. And again, I already mentioned local personal services and mixed-use businesses, and then grocery stores, uh pharmacy. But the key there is there's probably not enough demand uh to service like your own larger footprint grocery store, given the fact that you have one in Berwick, and then you also have opportunities in New Hampshire. So it's unlikely that a, a larger grocery store would come, but it's not improbable to get a smaller footprint grocery store, pharmacy, those kinds of things. Next slide. So I want to get to, uh, and Denise could help with some of the questions on this too, in terms of these are now like the specific actions and projects. And so there's quite a few, so I'm gonna hit some of the highlights. So on the downtown, project one, redevelop and ignite the downtown. So it's really important that, to utilize that tax increment financing district that's in place, start providing money that comes, that flows into that tip and using it to fund some of the improvements that are gonna come out of your downtown revitalization plan. It's real important to have an active, what I call here a B R and E program. Let me just explain that's business retention and expansion, it's basically supporting existing businesses. And the best way to do that is stay in touch with them regularly, and um Denise and team are already aware of that, they're already got um processes in place to do that, track it over time, and keep good relationships with businesses. Uh, separately from that, but related is having, it's really important to have them, to build a network of downtown businesses. Uh, they're there and they talk to each other somewhat informally, but they're willing to meet and they're willing to help each other out. So, so usually that's done, or it could be done by a regional chamber, but for smaller communities and main streets like this, they, while they, while they could easily be part of a chamber, maybe like maybe even are that's regional, they also want to be part of their own local group, and they want to get support from the community, they want to be active in sort of speaking about events that they can hold, and they just want to have a peer group for helping each other. Sometimes that requires someone from the community or one of the businesses, like a local bank, to help get that network started and then help administer the network, keep it going in the short term. Uh, more downtown events bring more people here, particularly on seasons where you can handle the traffic or where there's not so much going on, uh, to get some more support for those businesses. And this is one where you already have some good housing in the downtown, but more of a twenty-four-seven so that people don't have to get in their cars, that they can walk two, three, four blocks from businesses. And I know, um, that's not commercial development, but it'll support commercial development by having people that can be here twenty-four-seven and demanding goods and services. Next slide. The B R D program, this, again, Denise is also knows how to do this from the pre- previous work and years of being in economic development. But it's, it's, I'm just gonna stress, this is a step-by-step, but it's essentially not just visiting businesses, it's tracking what their needs are and then documenting that following up in the short time, but then also revisiting that from time to time about what the trends are telling. The next slide. So the two thirty-six, um, one is, um, is, is really focused on in terms of supportive, but also looking for other businesses in the region or in your marketing essentially. There's a separate slide on marketing that I'll get to, but if you really had to focus on what. But if you really had to focus on what it is that we're trying to promote or sell, if you will. It would be anything that's light industrial, not heavy industry, but light industrial. We've got plenty of that in the community already. And that's, that's a really good fit. I already mentioned the flex. And the professional and technical. So that ranges from architects to engineers, to small computer and I T companies. To people working in telecommunications, maybe not like a headquarters or something like that. But a smaller company that might be involved in working on building out the broadband infrastructure and things like that. Uh, and then finally the mixed use development as well. And that's something that's supported by the property owners. They really want to see the opportunity for mixed use. Uh, you, uh, have a corridor, um, infrastructure plan. So in other words, you may not be able to do everything in year one or year two, but over time. You need to document what your infrastructure needs are, sewer, water, roads, particularly sewer and water in this case in two thirty six. And then even though it may look overwhelming in terms of the price, plant, have a long term plan for its development and its findings. And then finally continue to work with property owners and in businesses. The business, the property owners are marketing their properties. Uh, that they, the ones that have a, that are interested in having it developed. But there's only so much they can do. There's much more that can be done in coordination with community. Next slide. Then we're almost there towards the end, um, so I think I got two more action items. So, but facilitate and develop attainable housing. So you might look at this and say, hey, well, I thought we were supposed to get more commercial and industrial development. Right now, one of the biggest problems for any kind of business, large or small, and everything in between is can I get enough workers? In other words, we talk to businesses all the time. We talked to some here in this community that said, I'm doing fine in terms of the market. And I would actually grow if I could get three, four, ten more workers. And when they, there's, there's reasons why they can't get them. Some of it is outside of the town's control. The wage rates, uh, the, uh, taxation policies between state of Maine and Hampshire, somewhat out of your, mostly out of your control. Uh, but but one aspect that comes up over and over and over again is. Boy, I would love to have my workers accounting me that they cannot get a house in South Warwick. Because there's just simply not enough supply of housing on the market that's at an attainable workforce for me. You, you, uh, if you listen to the news, I'm sure all you do here. The, this is a Maine problem. It's also a national problem, but it's very difficult in. What I would call, I, I know you don't think you're on the coast, but you're fairly close to the coast in Maine compared to like. You know, the narrower and western, um, counties of Maine. And, uh, it's a real big challenge for being housing affordable given the land prices. But there are options to use of it. And so what are some of those options? One is, uh, allowing the mixed use. And some of this you may already be working on since the time that I did this too, so I don't mean to suggest that you're not considering these. But I really want to stress the other thing that matters is, uh, allowing for home occupations. Uh, in businesses so that there's a lot of people now that a lot of the ordinances were designed to not allow home based businesses. Back in the day when that meant basically people were going to come to your place and there was a demand parking. But a lot of times now there's home based businesses and things like that that are not actually, uh. Requiring a lot of traffic or onsite visits. It's marketed to the housing developers, utilize tip. In the case of tip, and I've been mentioning it a lot, but there are special tip programs specifically for housing. Work with, work, work with a housing trust. The communities in Maine that are doing, making a bit of a difference, they're not solving the whole problem. But they're doing it in partnership with private developers, a public housing trust or a nonprofit housing trust. Which doesn't necessarily mean they're going to develop the land or or what they're going to help. Identify some of the challenges. They might help ensure long term affordability. They might provide some level of donation of the land, those kinds of things. And there's plenty of models out there for housing trusts. And make sure that this is, gets real big attention in the conference. The only other thing I would say is the more you can do to also, and I don't really see it on here, but I have a note for it. Is the more that you can do to provide accessory dwelling units and the ability for people to use their land. That have an extra unit on their property, that in and of itself is a way to have attainable house. Next slide. So the, um, this is relates to the marketing. Uh, and I think this is the last slide too in terms of the actions. So one thing is that you have several sites that are already on the market. And it it takes a lot to get the attention of interested buyers for commercial properties. So the individuals are, loaned properties are marketing, their real estate agents and their, their brokers are marketing. But you can do, you can be marketing as well. So you can be highlighting them on your economic development website. And the state recently upgraded its economic website. At the Department of Economic and Community Development where it features commercial sites. That are available and they're getting a lot of play on social media by advertising that site listing at the state of Maine. And I believe, in fact, I know it's free for you to participate in that as a community member. Um, the, making sure that the regional partners, the planning commission, the chambers. Uh, so on, it's the other communities, make sure they know what your economic plan is and what you're trying to focus on. And then I do think that, um, having an updated website, you already have a website, you have your economic development information on it. But as you progress, the more that you can put your site information on there, your available properties. And any kinds of updates and changes in zoning and land use, plus information on available workforce. Uh, there is, um, having a specific brand towards what you're willing to accept and what you're willing to promote. It might be a little bit different than the townwide brand of what you want to be known as a community, but it should fit in it like in terms of. What are we all about in terms of creating, you know, a livable place and opportunity for resilient businesses and things like that that you can promote. And then, um, just making sure that the public, um, knows about this plan and gets behind it. But that's it. That's my last slide. Other than the last one is like, what's next? Like just continue to get the word out. There's an action plan matrix that Denise is working on with other staff committees. And then you've got your road to that to get to work. So with that, I'll take questions and some of Denise might be able to better answer as well. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, I think from the planning board perspective, uh. That, that, that is, we've been talking about the air, this is a choice of energy. Yeah, I think we recognize where our origins are and the fact that they may be outdated and it's a critical punch that is over by here. I think the timing is right, you know, that somebody has come in and. Well, well, the vacation, the company also will then, maybe start that process, but you had something?
It was important, did you get me?
Nope.
Okay. For one, Jim, on behalf of the board, thank you for coming and doing your presentation. It was great. Um, another thing I just wanted to touch base on, I guess, this board has done a really nice job on, um, recognizing that there was an order. Um, not too long ago to reduce setbacks. In the, um, I want to, which is the two thirty six corridor, and they did a nice job of that, so that. There was a business that wanted to come in and that gives us the confidence that we're going to cut down. So they are making changes towards that, but upgrading the ordinance as a whole will help support that further, especially. Where the I, the I love, we keep talking about my name, other views, everything, so that, uh. They have king and sex, so we'll go through what they figure, so that too. Thank you.
And I think, that, that's just, that's a great example, so, and. You may know it, but like. It's common to you that that's done. Make sure that gets highlighted and communicated. Like, it's like, oh, everyone knows that. Who's going to want to know that as a fact? The more that that could, you know, show up on the news and social media and stuff like that. So people are aware that you're making progress. Cause that's a big deal. It is a really good. The other big deal too, I just want to say, I won't be taking more of your time is. I work at the bottom of this panel. I mean, we do regional plans, we do state plans. I don't always get, in fact, I rarely get to present to a planning board. So who knows to you because. I get to present to councils or special economic development committees. And then not necessarily planning boards initially need to kind of do it for the towns like, no, it's taken care of. Don't worry about that. So it's really good to be here and be able to give this presentation.
Could you, um, since a Ford will have you near, near my heart especially, could you elaborate some of the ways in which towns have actually amended their ordinance? Your, so, whether it's a waterfall or where land goes or tackling property or deeper bonuses, what, what else does that?
Yeah, so, um, some of them aren't necessarily just land use, but, um. The, um, so a couple, one is, and you mentioned a couple. Um, and I got to be careful because this is the word that gets people acquainted is density and bonuses, right? So and I understand it's a bad, but like doing it in the right time and place. So if you're a developer and. You realize I also do work for developers and understand the financial levels and things like that, but. They've got to be able to have a certain return in rents for, you know, sales on that property. And by having greater density, they can do it. And if they have that opportunity. They can then offer some at more affordable rates. Now affordable is all. There's many different levels of affordability, but that's one big one would be that. The other one would be, um, the accessory dwelling units. Uh, another would be, um. The, at the end of the day. So in many cases, the market still needs a boost. In other words, they could definitely do market rate. Uh, whether it be sales or rentals, but to get some of the affordability, that's where the tip can come in. And not just helping the developer make, get more profits, you're helping the developer build in a certain portion of affordability. Uh, and so that's another one.
Or work with nonprofit, affordable, dollars who use. And like announce some tax credits to the nonprofit.
And, and that's exactly it. So like in, in the case, so the question, the question was, the example was. In working with nonprofit housing and so forth, and that, there's, there, there are a whole host of developers and, and businesses. That work with the land trust and the nonprofit housing. And there's, there's Avesco. I don't want to just give an example, I'm not trying, but whether it's Avesco or the South Portland Housing Corporation, which goes beyond South Portland. So on and so forth. That's a real common law. I might be missing something.
Well, um, you know, part of Sonya ordinance provision idea is that I have, okay, it's only because, well, it's. Working effectively in many of the communities is we do not have enough, um, property that's so presidential that allows students. So I'm working with a business owner right now off of two thirty six. He's waiting, chomping at the bit to have the residential, um, the I one, I two be able to have mixed use. So in order to prevent your crunches business numbers, you would like to have a model where you have retail and other resources on the first level. And two levels of basically affordable housing. So that model works very effectively in many, many communities and. Without the, with the absence of that in the, I think it's the I two, right? The I one allows and the I two doesn't. And so if you're in Pumpkin Town, in fact, in Pumpkin Town area, you cannot have residential. And so this is where this land is and he was ready to knock it out of the park. And so these are the things that we need to be considering. We just want to analyze why this is occurring. So, um, I think that this is a model, but mixed use built into some of these areas, you know, um. Specific areas, so then you don't have developers coming in and work in other communities that spots are only their contract going, it was. Did he make the business ladder? You know, that's not a fact, so, just a thought.
Well, I do appreciate that. Thank you very much for coming. I agree with you. Things, regular issues. Uh, we are talking about the A D U's tonight. Uh, for tomorrow and next week, I doubt it. Obviously, I could be acting a little fun. I have a couple of concerns that I want to see. Word in there. You know. Just kind of a point to make publicly that I think it's important that the county team is working on these plans. I think there's, there's, making sure that what we're doing is, is grounded in research. And, you know, action teams are created out of them, which isn't giving us. You know, we're working on the common plan, we're working on, on this market, we have market analysis. We're going to be doing the downtown fight of the nation plan. Each one of these plans is really, really super important. And they all fit together to help us be, you know, a greater vision of what we want to come here and help justify what we think. So I know there may be some people out here who will think that, oh, why are we doing this, why are we doing that? Each one of these studies that we're doing, one, they've never been done in this sector before, but they each play a critical role. How we move forward higher country. And so, you know, I sit back and say after our last meeting, you know, when we were talking about the ordinance and our. Requests to the town council will have to get there, because it really is going to be the reason for it. That at least in the next couple of months, if something comes out, we can continue to talk about this, we can continue to talk about. The tip districts, although that, that's really not necessarily involving us, but what does involve us is, you know, talking about. What we can do here locally from our sphere of the codes to help promote that. Uh, and to make sure that we're working with each of these entities that are helping us. I think it's really the game. And so it's, uh, kind of fun to be here. Uh, and so I think this is really great and will really help inform us as we move forward, you know, um. Again, I hope we give this a whole lot of, with, with people kind of committing, like. You know, hey, let's go over the doing what these are the times we have to do to keep you with us a lot. So it is what it is.
Thank you for giving us the time to present.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking that. Thank you. All right, so let's move on to business. L D two thousand three ordinance amendments. And we talked about this before for quite some time. Uh, at the last meeting, there was some general confusion about, uh, I don't know if I have that particular sheet or. I'm not really sure what you're talking about, uh, this, that'll be in my document. So in front of us tonight, uh, we all have the same documents. And, uh, you know, I want to take some time to review this. We had a public hearing. We are within our rights to approve this and that, and the council tonight we want to. Uh, I do want to recognize that we received a quotation from Brett Rock who's here, not me, you know, question. For, um, regarding, uh, I think some section of one forty, I forget the specific, uh, area here. Now, but it had to do with the A D U's, yeah, specifically, who needs to be, I think it's there. It's in the, I'm my second, it's on the last tab, one forty dash forty six point one. Very last degree tab in the title. And it has to do line nine, uh, where accessory accommodation, that is, you know, thirty percent of the total living area of the building. And it can be located, certain invisible attached to the building, where it's below. Uh, he brought up, uh, the point, and we did have some general discussion about this, you know, uh. What if someone has a three thousand square foot home, uh, they can build a larger A D U, since the two thousand square, if you want a smaller A D U. Uh, and so, uh, you know. I think he was suggesting that perhaps we should look at that. Uh, and I did give that some thought after our last meeting, so I don't disagree at all with what he's saying. You know, part of any other conversations from this board, I would like to take a look at that, uh, one forty forty six point one. Uh, line nine, and look at the way to possibly expand that. Yeah, maybe a tiered approach. I did have an opportunity to look, uh, at some of the stuff I was saying yesterday. Regarding basically a tiered approach, uh, where, you know, three thousand square foot house gets thirty percent. Uh, or, you know, maybe a, you know, seven hundred fifty square feet in service greater, two thousand square feet at forty percent. Uh, or seven hundred fifty square feet. So that sets up a baseline. You know, but it doesn't allow you to would stand it, but I do a little bit more. I think there's validity in that, uh, you know, with that, I would go pretty, I just propose. I'd like to have a, I'd like to have a conversation and to get guarding any other. I don't see issues with anything else. I, one of my issues that I brought up last week, but. It says that you can't require, I mean, I get a, I think it's another issue, but will that? I mean, I get it, uh, that again is another issue, but will that be putting arcing out into the public way? Uh, so I know there may be some restrictions there, but that's going to warrant a further conversation down the code. Uh, but thanks to this particular issue, what's the board want to do this?
Uh, I, I think. I, I, I read, um, it was Brett, right?
Yes.
Brett's, um, that letter, email, and I, I agree that it seems sort of the unfair. That it shouldn't depend on the size of your house. And I think actually just setting a blanket. Maximum minimum would be the most fair. Also, you know, if you have a huge house, the point is you're not allowed to build a second home. Right? It's an accessory dwelling. And, and that, whether it's a matter of scale or how you think about it. You know, if you had a five thousand square foot home, it did thirty percent, that would be the size of my house now. So I think having some maximum limit and maybe a minimum will take care of this problem. So I'm not sure of every scenario that I've been just talking about.
Yeah.
Or what other fellows have done, because Brett also sent us some other advice, which I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at.
Yeah, actually the agreement, um, was the. Uh, well, with the, you know, they have a fair part about it, you know what I mean? And, you know, we could try to just do something, uh. Rather than, you know, over the top or we could, um, say where we set a, you know. Want to build a subordinate unit that is thirty percent or seven hundred fifty feet, whichever is.
Whichever is greater.
Yeah, whichever is greater in this case, and then just keep it fairly simple, one line adjustment, you know? Yeah, I'm in favor of something like that. Jen, do you have any thoughts on that? Did your vote officer, do you see some of this? Have you come across lately any ADU requests? Because we already allowed in Southport with this two plan, let's say.
So I can tell you that the ADU conversation is moving here in South Fork. We get probably five or six all the week on it. We have, um, regular staff coming in every weekend asking if these four hundred pass that they can put the ADU in. Because right now the square footage of, you can't put an ADU in your house under current ordinance. If your main living, um, the main dwelling is not two thousand square feet. So I don't, what you guys are talking about, thirty percent, I think is great, but I do think like, like her, she said this is an accessory dwelling unit.
Right.
But I think as long as you guys pick a number that's under fifty percent, I think that's fine. Fifty percent kind of becomes the duplex, I think, at that time. So.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. Right, agreed, agreed. My, the number that was sticking out in my head was the house's worth. And I'm not saying, you know, why do I say that, you know, the first floor, I think of like a garage. You know, you got your garage bay, you got a little, a little bit.
Right, but a, a two car garage, let's think about it, it's. Forty feet by, I would say forty by four. Yeah, it's like a, no, there are three bedroom apartments that are six hundred fifty, four hundred thousand, so they're not, they're not tiny. They're literally a dining room, kitchen, three bedrooms, you know, two bathrooms. That, you know, two fifty, seven fifty, eight hundred thirty. So, and that's. Yeah.
What would you say a typical garage is forty by forty?
It's like forty, about sixty five, forty five.
Yeah. So that's, that's pretty good.
I think, I, I think that's pretty big for.
Yeah. Probably twenty six by twenty eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot of standard.
Standard garage is twenty four by twenty eight, two car garage, and then even everything twenty six by eight.
Yeah.
But we actually have a minimum, so, because we have a minimum for what you're planning now.
Is that right? There, there, there is a minimum in years. I gotta look back and find if we had some of that debate, a hundred ninety square feet.
Hundred and ninety is the minimum.
Yeah. So, but I do agree.
Four of these.
Yes. So I would be fine, you know, say accepting accessory, uh, or Michelle, let it be thirty percent. Or something square footage, whichever is greater, uh, you know, that. So what, what do we think that number might be? Do you want to do a person, do you want to do a percentage or do you want to do a square footage? I think the percentage would be.
I think the percentage is the problem.
The percentage is the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to avoid the percentage problem there. Uh, now, of course, we want, and we also need to pick a number that's going to be, um. Sufficient for an accessible dwelling event, so we need a. Kitchen, bathroom, could be a studio, so we necessarily got that separate. Yeah, every type of situation. But, um, so I did look at that stuff we got today, it seemed to be, there was a percentage of just about everyone. It was the percentage for square footage. Yeah, uh, and it was, in that case, it was whichever was greater, but in that kind of sets. A minimum, you know, like, let's just say seven fifty, so you got your minimum in, in some degree, it's a larger house, it's a little bigger. So I see, I saw that in the information we got, um. Yeah, Jen.
The current minimum in the town for an ADU that's experienced or created, I just want you guys to keep that in mind. So if you said, if you want to set that number higher, because then we'll have some who don't, who are the main.
Don't worry, for the conversation, stick with the six hundred. Yeah, we could stick with six hundred. You know what I mean? It's still that of the minimum, right?
That's a minimum, but this one would be.
But there's two different, yeah, there's two different things though, because one of the issues is people want that where there's a change in the minimum people have a square foot. For this area.
Right.
You know, but if we put a number down, a different number, that is going to, if you choose something other than six hundred. Then I'm saying that that's going to put a lot of, you know, the ADUs and non-need for the cap. And then that complicates it for, frankly, the landlord or. Or, yes.
I think that you guys are kind of on the right track. We're talking like seven fifty, I think that's a good number, um, somewhere around there.
It's like a twenty five by thirty.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a good sign for parking.
Yeah, I guess.
So is the, is the concern that, um, in access, for a smaller house, the accessory dwelling could. Come close to being the same size, if we want to consider a percentage on that, or is the concern that? If we have a percentage, the larger the house, the bigger the accessory dwelling is, one, because I feel like, um. I feel like we're flipping the, uh. The numbers there, so I, I feel like we cap it at a maximum of, let's say, seven hundred fifty square feet for an ADU. Or, you know, for a house that's only thousand square feet, then that's. Three quarters of the size of their house. So we don't want, we don't want them putting up another. House a similar size, so maybe they'd have to with the percentage there because it would be. You know, they'd be capped out at. Or will not here, but you know, the, the number would be lower, so it's seven fifty or thirty percent of your area of, well, for everyone's less.
Yeah, but that makes, if you have a thousand square foot cape or something, that makes your ADU more susceptible.
Well, seven hundred fifty four thirty percent. We are, if it's four or less, you want to have or greater.
Jen, the first, the first question, but if you have a, if you have a five thousand square foot house, thirty percent of that is going to be much more than seven.
No, so I think you should, I think you should, that's why I think there should be.
I, yeah, I'd be more, I'd be more in favor of like a hard cap.
Yeah, well, I mean, uh, and here's my one, uh, my one thought on that as far as. What we're trying to maintain with the ADUs is the residential neighborhood, uh, nature of the neighborhood. We don't want, you know, duplexes going in unless we're actually providing any new licenses. And it's just different. If you've got a five thousand square foot house with like a pool and on a couple acres, you know, on some sizable lot. And then a thousand two, you know, or maybe in this case, well, it'd be a, uh, thirty percent size, so pretty sizable. Yeah, yeah, I mean, putting in something like that, that's something to change the nature of your, you still have a giant house dominating the lot. That doesn't change that, you know, it won't do much. And I see a lot of these. Yeah, I, 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 I think if you go and look at what we were saying today, you would see that it's the greater. With the minimum being, you know, everybody's entitled essentially to do up to that, you know, if you have a fifteen hundred square foot house. For example, everyone can go out there, build a seven hundred fifty square foot ADU. Yeah, if you have a larger property, because don't let's not forget here, you can, you can, you can do, you can do more than just one. Right, and do two, and in certain circumstances, depending on how the lot is set up, you can take it. You know, you can do more than that. Uh, so, but you still have to have a sewer. Right? I mean, you can't just go and convert your garage into, you're still gonna have to, you need to type a. A, a three bedroom septic design, and I'm adding a whole new thing, you've got to go through that whole process.
We're going, we're going back to where the lines are getting blurred again. We're talking right now accessory dwelling unit. That's allowed in every zone across every, every parcel here in town. You're getting into the affordable housing one way.
No, but, but, but. Right, but if I wanted to, well, I think our issue is the ADU.
ADUs can be allowed in every zone, every parcel.
Right, and what if, what if the septic can't support it?
So they'll have to.
Yeah, yeah, right. What I'm, so what I'm saying here is, you know, you can't just, I guess what I'm saying is more of an public assumption. While we're talking about, yes, you have the right to do this. It's not automatic. You, yes, you may be able to do it, but if your septic can't be expanded or your septic can't support this.
Right, so that's what I'm going to do.
Let's talk about how it works.
Yeah.
Someone comes in and they want to put an ADU on their property, currently right now under our ordinance today. They have to come in, they have to apply for a building permit for that. Then if they have private wealth and private septic, they have to prove because the septic is on a number of bedrooms, not bathrooms. They have to prove that their septic is big enough. If it is not, they go back to an engineer. And they either have to do an expansion or that engineer signs off that it is big enough for what they're trying to do there. And they have to prove it. So there, that's already in place and that part doesn't go away.
Right, right. Well, I, I guess what I'm trying to say, I just want to make sure folks do understand that, you can't just go. Convert your garage and deal with it. You still have to follow the code.
Yes.
So i- in the ones that we got sent to the U C tables that had all the various counts?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, is that, I don't know if that's in the packet.
No.
So, and I'm happy to pass my computer if you want it, but look at, but a lot of our six hundred, seven fifty, eight hundred or some percentage. With a negative cap and.
Right, you know.
You know.
Yeah, I saw the percentage with it, with a minimum, so in other words, thirty percent, or seven hundred fifty, whichever is greater.
I don't know why anybody would want to have that. I think the maximum is a problem.
No, it's what it's now.
If somebody wants to build something that, you know, is a shed that has somebody living, I don't. You know, as long as it meets all the code requirements of an ADU.
It will refer to those particles.
I think we're all generally on the same page here. It really comes down to what do we want to do? What do we want to essentially modify? Uh, on line nine. Yeah.
So I don't, I don't really, I don't see the need for a minimum, like go for the advantage thing, we have to have a minimum, signs, have a ability. Because we already required that, right, in a department building?
L D two thousand and three, part of their state law is that we have to allow a minimum of a hundred and ninety square feet. It's already established.
It's already done, so a hundred and ninety, so it's gonna be a hundred and ninety with some other number.
So really, we just need a map.
Let's just pick it up.
So thirty percent or number whichever is greater.
And the existing minimum per town is six hundred.
Yes, so two thousand square foot home is the minimum right now, right? So every ADU.
Yeah.
Pretty much in this town should be, okay, it's not a perfect world, but it should be six hundred square feet minimum right now.
So if, but if we set a, a maximum or thirty percent. Think, think it through, right? So, um. If you have a small place, you, you can, you can go anywhere between one ninety and seven fifty, right? If you do a big place, you're still stuck at seven fifty.
So no, you can go thirty percent or seven fifty, whichever is greater.
No, whichever is less. You don't want whichever is greater, because that's the problem with the huge house, you can build a second home, basically.
Well, we're talking about different things, because we're talking about trying to get.
I don't, I don't.
That's what I was, that's what I was saying.
Supposed to be an accessory dwelling unit, it's not supposed to be that you get to add a second home. Thirty percent of that is the size of the home I live in then. So I, that doesn't, that doesn't, to me, ring a, this is an accessory dwelling. And you know, I, I don't care if it.
Well, they're just increasing the percentage.
No.
No.
I like the, I like the hard cap too.
Take a cap, because.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't want them to go over a certain amount, no matter what the percentage is, and if you have a small house, you want to get to that size. And you have the option of not getting.
Well, I think it would, just for, you know, like, you know, navigate. You may be saying you don't want them to go over size, but. Why does it matter if someone who built a larger home wants to do thirty percent for core area? Then it'd be kind of, it'd be a ballpark.
Because it's, it's called an accessory dwelling unit, not a second.
Accessory for paths.
Well, that becomes, that becomes blurry. What makes it accessory once it's the size of a, of a, of a regular house and something?
Well, think about it, you know, again, you have issues. With families, uh, needing to find a house that's.
But this isn't, but this isn't, this is an accessory dwelling unit, it's not a man's. I mean, these are originally called in-law. Right, the idea was, it, and in fact, when I came here, I really think it said you had to be related to the person. Who's living in that cell, or whatever.
Quite a goal is to increase housing opportunities.
But this isn't it, and the other part of the L D, our L D two thousand and three article. To give you the opportunity to have a little rental income, move in, an in-law, maybe have your kids live there.
Well, what if they're married and having kids at their home?
Then you get to build a second house if you have a property court on your. And this is supposed to take the place of another, that's as far as I understand it. Otherwise, we would have. The density, which, you know, everybody wants to keep at a minimum, would change and will, would maybe change, right?
Well, but I think currently there's no cap, right?
Yeah.
So the term is thirty percent.
Have an ADU in the town of South Fork currently today. Their main living, the main dwelling needs to be two thousand square feet. It doesn't have a cap on how big they can be. And it just says thirty percent of that. It has to be a cap on whatever. So. I see what you're saying.
Yeah, it's not.
But we're not, but what I'm saying is that, if, this is not creating any new problems, it's not, thirty percent is. Right, in fact.
Right.
And so what we're, like, I think we're, we're talking about different items, uh, like, but they're tied together. They are tied together, yeah, yeah. And I mean, we're trying to, like, we're, just to be clear, we're on purpose of conversation. Yeah, you know, let's just say, uh, seven, thirty percent, seven hundred and fifty square feet. I'm saying whichever is greater. I think you're saying whichever is less.
Right, because I don't, I don't.
So that's.
Right, the quickest it did, gives somebody the opportunity to get a second home.
But it's somewhat reversed, because then that's, you know, part of the concern, well, we'll leave thirty percent. Then I'll be, you know, they're discriminated against if I have a smaller home.
Right.
But now, but, but then you're saying the same thing, now you're saying to be a larger home, oh. You're limited to seven hundred square.
That, that is what we're saying, it's an accessory dwelling.
So I think. And so, you know. I think that's maybe where, where we are, that, like, whichever is greater or whichever is less.
So let's talk about that, because if you do whatever is greater, okay? And you say, okay, thirty percent or seven hundred and fifty square feet, now I can say what you're saying. And if you say, okay, well, my house is a thousand square feet and whichever is greater, so seven hundred and fifty square feet. Well, that's three quarters of my house, my square footage of my house, I'm putting the ADU on. It is an accessory dwelling unit for a reason. I agree with that.
Right, and a lot of beauty too, accessory dwelling is less than fifty percent.
It's less than fifty percent.
Yeah. No, I, I don't disagree with the concept, ADU isn't an ADU accessory dwelling. However, I, I tend to agree with what Eric said, if there are, you know, people who start to own something in, you know. That can reasonably go up to a thousand square foot. And it doesn't damage the character or whatever, then how is that different then?
But I think it, it actually does. I think it will damage the character, because now you really, what you have is two houses on a lot. You have, you know, you have.
It's because the ADU can be a separate cottage.
Yeah, but it's a cottage.
Has to be connected, or it could become a separate environmental event.
Right, but it's a, but it's still, it's still cottage, it's not a second home for a lot, which, there is another mechanism for allowing that. And we can do that now if you want. Wherever we have a single family home, you're allowed to put more. So if you want to do that, you can build a second home. We have a vehicle that allows that. This is a different thing. This is. You know, meant to sort of occupy a different niche. So it's, you know.
Yeah, no, 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 I.
So, and all the other towns. Not smaller, not larger than.
Brunswick has, uh, saying that thirty five percent. Seven fifty.
Not, not greater than seven fifty or thirty five percent of floor area per property, January fourth. So, but that, that allows for. A huge house to have a second, a second huge home.
Cause we currently want.
Right. And actually, we, we have to believe. I'd be raising this up, but if it's not part of tonight's agenda, are. Are we going to look at short-term rental and what that means? Cause that has to be a part of that discussion.
Yeah, so my job to keep you here, the council is prepared, they want that. I, I don't, it's something we have to look at.
Yeah, no, I think we definitely, it has to be in somebody's radar.
Yeah, well, because you're adding a bunch of rental apartments. You're, you're, you're being allowed.
And also the, the. But what's the intent? Is the intent to create more rental housing? Is it create, is it procedures? Is it to make it easier for people to have their kids remain in town, can't afford maybe to buy a house? I mean, there's. You know, the philosophy behind it is not unimportant. But, you know, is it to create that, create a short-term rental? Income for people and I don't know how to tell, but that, that's something we have to discuss and flesh out because that's. You know, that's part of the problem with taking long-term rental off the market is. A lot of towns are regulated because of that problem. That's, that's adding the housing prices right there. Anyway.
Well, why don't we maybe kind of chip away at this? Why don't we talk about what we think being that is? Thirty percent. Or what, eight hundred, seven fifty, six hundred? What, what do we think is reasonable number? You know, I'd say six, just to stay where our current minimum is.
Minimum six, I'm okay with it with seven fifty minutes, but that seems to be. Some of the consensus and that actually gives you a fairly.
But I said, I don't agree with the two seventy, the printing case inside you.
Forty five.
Yeah, that's pretty good side. Just looking here. Like, I've done with this, you're personal right there, no larger than forty percent of total area of the actual A D U dwelling. For eight hundred square foot, whichever is smaller.
Whichever is smaller.
I think, I think in that case, like, the higher the percentage, the better in that case, because then as you get smaller. Is your. As you start.
Yeah, we're talking about maximum size.
As you start creeping down, well, you know, your dwelling unit. Your increased amounts, you're not, there's not as big of a discrepancy. If it was thirty percent, then, you know. Whatever's less, wow, Smith.
Oh, that's a good point, because you do a lesser percentage of thirty.
For a higher percentage.
Do a higher percentage, do a higher percentage.
But if you're gonna do that, then why wouldn't you just say this is the most you can do?
But six hundred, you don't have to do seven, you can say I have a thousand square feet, I'm gonna add up five hundred, six hundred minimum. Accessory dwelling, right? I, I'm okay with six hundred to eight hundred square there.
I like the forty percent.
Forty percent.
Forty percent. Whichever.
Forty percent or number whichever is less.
Oh, whichever is less.
Yeah.
Maybe the grounds will pick a side whether or not, but we will, we will tell them that we struggled with, uh. Whichever is less or whichever is greater, so give us.
So how big, I can't do math, my head, how big would your house, so if it were. When you get to forty percent, it's being sixteen hundred.
What size do you have, you know, beginning of it? What's the name of it?
I'm trying to figure out what, what, we're eight hundred feet from forty percent of your unit.
Two thousand.
Thank you. Yes, am I? Yes, Matt, okay.
So that's basically what you're saying. Yeah.
So if you have a house that's twenty five square feet, you know, we get eighty.
Right.
And if you have a smaller house, you can do.
House size.
Yeah, you know, thousand square feet, it will be four hundred square feet if you go up to eighty.
Right.
Also, it puts the, if you go up to forty percent, there's a good case for it. A thousand square foot home, okay, you can only go three hundred square feet if it's thirty percent. Or you've got a four hundred square feet and an accessory dwelling unit with a thousand square foot home, I mean, that. Hundred square feet in that size means a difference, right? Hundred square feet in, uh, eight hundred. Doesn't really make a difference, you know?
I don't know if I was following you, if you have a thousand square foot home. If you.
If we go to twenty percent.
Or four hundred square feet. Right, or.
But then it would be, or the greater.
Oh, well, then, then it's whichever is less.
What, what you're saying is that when you get into the smaller homes, a hundred square feet of a three hundred square foot apartment, there's a big difference.
If you go. So if you have a thousand square foot of. Under our current ordinance, thirty percent and thirty, that's here, that's only three hundred square feet, you're eighteen. Okay, but if you boost it up to forty percent on a thousand square foot home, it's four hundred square feet. That number matters for that guys. That forty percent. Hundred square foot doesn't matter on a three thousand square. You know what I mean? Not as much.
Let it just settle.
Well, it just, it seems to penalize people with small households, and that's what I don't.
That, 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 that's what happens, that is greater. But then it works against you on the other end.
Right.
And so you can't have it both ways.
Unless you're.
Unless you say just seven hundred and fifty or even just square feet. Maximum, you can't go over that. Anything else, any other percentage is gonna skew towards. Bigger, bigger houses.
So Sparky, oh, Sparky did one where they actually went through house sizes and sort of said. Two thousand square feet, it's this or that, and over two thousand or three thousand square feet, it's this. And five thousand square feet is, you know, and they lowered.
Right.
So that it basically is in line with, through the sidebar. So, so if you have a five thousand square foot house, you get a twenty percent or a one thousand fifty square feet. If you have a house between three thousand and five thousand, it's thirty percent. If it's two thousand and three thousand square feet, you get thirty five percent or seven fifty. If it's under two thousand square feet, it's forty percent or seven fifty.
But that's a lot, I mean, I get it, I don't.
I think a thousand square.
I don't, I don't disagree with that, here's a broken, that's a lot for us.
I'd say between six hundred and eight hundred seem reasonable, no matter what size your houses. I, I don't know.
I, I just, you know, a thousand square foot house, let's just go back to that. And you say, okay, well, we're gonna allow seven hundred and fifty square feet. I mean, that is the size of the house. And you know what I mean? Seven hundred and fifteen square feet is in a lot. You know, to be.
But if you bring, but if you bring grandma over, dad, oh grandma, he.
The dog grandma, yeah.
And I think we're all, like, the other item that we need to take into account, that I think you were kind of alluding to here. Is that. Since there are very few restrictions on the A D U and what we can say about, basically, you can go in regardless. If you've got one of these super small lots downtown, a thousand square foot house, okay, and put an eight hundred square foot official house on it. I don't think it, yeah, well, I mean.
Well, that's what you're right, but, but we're saying, but like. You know what I mean, like, there aren't some, it's, it's set back, right?
That's just funny because you think about it, if you have a thousand square foot home, you have a two-car garage and that's with. And you can convert that to a car garage, I mean, it's more than half the.
Right.
You know.
That's okay, I'm okay.
Okay, well, we're looking at like. What we're, actually, we're really, it seems like what we're talking about is what is a reasonable? Unit to put in there that would. Give somebody livable space. And whether your house is five thousand square feet or a thousand square feet, you know, living in a, for a couple or. Maybe with the kids, like, you know, rent a square foot place or not livable. But seven hundred and fifty maybe, and so whether you're. That's sort of what we're, I think, looking at.
When I, when I had my first apartment. It was just like seven hundred and fifty square feet, two bedroom. They had a kitchen.
Yeah, same, same.
Uh, that was seven hundred fifty. That was reasonable. For people. Start getting more than that, and start having kids. And again. The typical being the meeting has started off, it's not gonna be able to qualify after the doll hole.
So this, once again, A D U's are not.
But, but that's what they're gonna be.
You can solve a problem for somebody that is single or maybe they just got married, I mean, I have lived in, pardon, it's that's more, smaller, um. That's kind of. It needs, I think it kind of needs to be that size, so you. It's hard to say like, well, I'm a custom dwelling unit on a thousand square foot house and a cabinet four square feet, that doesn't really.
I'm not, no, I'm stupid.
No, I'm just, I, that's why I, I'm more in favor of just setting a solid number and just saying this is the most you can get regardless of size of your house. As long as you can meet setbacks. And then you don't have a sliding scale, it's just, you know. Whether the. Person, the own plot has a five thousand square foot house or one thousand square foot house. We determine that seven hundred and fifty. Square feet or eight hundred square feet is a good livable space and it should be allowed to have that on their plot.
Yeah.
That, that's where, that's where I'm at, I guess.
And also, I, you know, new construction is expensive and so. A lot of people might not, you know, take advantage of that and, and build out through the maximum, you know, some people might want a one bedroom unit, just, you know. I know a guy who moved into his own accessory dwelling unit and rented his house out and then he was on. So, you know, and he only needed a one or two bedroom unit, he didn't need a three bedroom, he wasn't a fan of that, so. Well, that, that occurs on every housing issue.
No, I, I don't disagree with that, just. From a practical perspective. While it says A D U, exceptionally creating more rental housing.
Yeah.
That's at the end of the table, yeah, there. And the concern is, you know, looking at the range of. Singles, couples. You know, those are gonna be grandparents. At the end of the day, that's what they're gonna pay.
I need to speak into the mic, sorry.
I like service.
We can't. Watch this tomorrow and I don't know. That's better, thank you.
What, what do you think there?
Feel like we're. Kind of. I have changed my position from. Where I was originally, originally looking at the, the normal thing, maybe more like a forty percent. Hey, never change your position.
Right, right, right. Excuse me, uh, what the, uh. Forty percent. Or.
I can make sense for the A D U, um. Honestly, I, I. I don't really, I mean, since it doesn't seem to be a problem in the existing code. I would also be amicable, just. What I just.
Maintaining, well, maintaining, well, I do think that we shouldn't allow some. Smaller houses to bill any use. I think that's, I think we're all agreeing on that. I think we do need to change that part, and everyone agrees. Yep, everyone here agrees on that part. So really, what we need to dial in is where we're putting those maxes. Or. These problems. Uh, I see your point in that if you're gonna do, I think a thousand square foot house and add an eight hundred square foot A D U on it. That's more likely to be once.
Yeah, but, but, uh.
So I'm going more toward just setting that as a number, getting rid of the percentage. Setting a number. I think of a twelve hundred square foot house, typical ranch house, a lot of you in this town.
Sure.
Uh, I think that literally, if you run the numbers, a two-car garage. You know, it's kind of like, you, you, I say a two-car garage with a, with a, with a, right, that's not a huge. When you think about it. If you have a, a twelve hundred square foot house. And then you have a garage over here, twenty-four by twenty-four, it will be over five hundred square feet. That, that's book for another three hundred square feet, you can do one stair. Uh, my house is a perfect example. We have a two-car garage. Um, when the addition was built, probably not purchased of it, but, you know, two large bedrooms, you know, bathroom and a laundry room. Now, you can easily turn that space into a workable.
And, and also. Do a thousand square foot house. Like, in my neighborhood, which has some density on Old Fields Road, there are people with farms that are bigger than an A D U is going to be. There are people with sheds that are bigger than an A D. It was going to be, there are people who run businesses out of it. So, you know. And people in the area of four car garage, I mean, we have a neighbor with a two-car garage and a three-car garage. And, you know, that could have easily been their A D U and I can't say it looks bad, they have enough room for it and. You know, they met their setbacks and I just, you know, I don't want to get into those weeds of legislating.
So I think, so I think if you do a percentage in the number, whichever is greater, whichever is less. I think you're still agreeing in this, what it is, in equity. So I think that. If you were just wanna come up with a number of seven fifty, say seven fifty, that's it, everyone will allow seven fifty.
Well, then, we have a minimum.
The minimum one ninety.
The minimum is one ninety.
One ninety, great, one ninety to seven fifty, I'm giving that. I make a motion that we, uh, for, are we ready?
Yeah, yeah, I think what we're talking about. Yeah, I think what we're talking about is one forty, forty-six point one. That's the last tab. And it's line number nine. Accessory apartment, so this is how it currently is. And proposed. Accessory apartment shall not exceed thirty percent of the total living area of the building, you all agree. But I think what we're suggesting is. The accessory apartment shall not exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Great. Do that.
Will not exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet and cross out the total living area and thirty percent of the living area of. The, the building. Now you got a number. It's a hard number, same for everybody. That the person has a seven hundred or twelve hundred square foot ranch style home or still up or whatever. It's not unreasonable, but I'm gonna say, hey, I'll put a two-car garage here. Size wise. And I'm gonna go to the front here for the.
Right, that's a, that's a pretty easy, though, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Other than that, I. I don't have any other.
Are you guys in a, to make that change?
We already did, uh, who, who voted?
No, actually, I, I started a motion to say if you, we can vote on the whole, all the changes at once, so let's not do a piece.
Yeah.
Right, if there's anything else you wanted to talk about. Uh, I, I actually have one question on the table, sorry, table A. So. Affordable housing development has been. Um. Added as a use, and it's like, right, we didn't have that. But why is it a separate use as opposed to just, you know, our usual housing? Why is the affordability component and why aren't we allowing it in our four five? Is that because the, it has to be in a, a. A downtown growth area to get the bonus?
Sorry, I was thinking, you can eat that something and I.
Sure. So, um. Affordable housing has been called out separately in table A now.
Yeah.
So, but. What?
It's been added.
It's been added, right, right, but what if somebody wants to do an affordable housing project that isn't part of the density bonus?
It, it's town water now, so we're a growth area, is my understanding, growth area.
But that's part of the L D two thousand and three, you could also have somebody decide to do an affordable housing project. In another part of the town. And, and I don't, and why are we, I mean, I see that's why you're restricting it to our, out of our four five.
Hold on a second.
I think it does have to do with the habit.
Right, no, that's if you get a density bonus under L D two thousand and three, but if somebody wanted to come and develop affordable housing. Just like the senior housing project, buying, whatever. I don't know why we would be, this ordinance doesn't necessarily apply to that, like you could do a cluster development. With dwelling and housing tax credits.
It's because in our four, our ordinance, it. Well, I, I think this is why.
Okay.
In our current ordinance, multifamily dwellings are not recognized, they're, uh, under the table, they're a no for our, for in our five, that's why.
Okay, but you could do. You can do affordable housing that is not multifamily. So you could do a cluster development that is actually a core of a single-family housing, there's one in Ryne right now. So I don't.
So we can change that while we're sitting here. So we can change that while we're sitting here.
I, I, I think the point is, if this, if this entry relates only to LD two thousand and three, we should call it out that way and not, I don't think we need to. Have this sweeping change in where affordable housing can, can be built. Right, it's only that if you wanna get that bonus, you have to be in the square area.
Yeah.
So it's not all affordable housing, it's just that. But I don't know, I don't know how you wanna capture that. Let me.
Yeah, well, I think. Because I'm used to looking at this. And I'm familiar with it. Yes, I don't. I don't necessarily fully understand what you're saying. I think it does call out, we're doing, we're doing this. Because of LD two thousand and three, that's there because of LD two thousand and three.
Right, but, but it also would apply to other situations, I think, to make sure we're not asking someone to apply to other affordable housing that isn't under LD. LD two thousand and three is a very particular thing, it says that you get to do, what is it, two point five more units, right, than certain parameters. Right, if you do, if you do it as affordable, or as, what is it? Two out of six units have to be affordable, some percentage have to be affordable. And it has to be in the downtown area, but there are other situations where you might do affordable housing that are outside of that.
You just don't get to that.
Well, it's, it's not though, but that's the major, you want it's only to find the LD two thousand and three, not all affordable housing. Right?
Well, right, right here.
Right.
I, I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, I think if you wanna go down that road, then you.
I don't think, I, wherever, wherever you have housing, where you have housing, you could have affordable housing, look. Wherever this housing already called out, you can have affordable housing in LD two thousand and three is gonna give you a density bonus within certain parameters of the growth area downtown. But now you've created a category that restricts all affordable housing, not just that. So, it, it just need to be very specific about calling this out as part of LD two thousand and three, and not calling. Right?
I see what you're saying.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah, cause it's not, affordable housing's not mentioned anywhere else on the table, so, by putting it in there, not specifying your. Unintentionally perhaps, couple.
Right, and affordable housing technically is sixty percent area median income per block, and what the restriction is for this are. Eighteen, sixteen?
Eighteen, I think.
Yeah, that's actually not affordable housing, affordable housing under HUD is sixty percent of the lot. You can keep making up these new things, but that's not affordable.
Rental housing in development in which a household whose income does not exceed eighty percent.
Right, that's actually technically not.
That's, that's what, say, a lot part of this, you know.
Well.
I know.
Yes, they have their, yes.
What you're.
Don't write this, but they have their.
Fully that out.
Okay, root that out, okay, what?
I'm pretty sure that that affordable housing. Development fine, but that is definitely, is the same.
I didn't hear any of that.
Right. It's coming for the best. This is, uh, did you hear him?
Yes, I did, you know.
Sorry.
Oh, you're saying that this would capture what it would be anything?
I'm taking that, that cap. It's on.
Yeah, now it is.
All right. I'm thinking that it captures that multifamily dwellings, if you look at the line item for multifamily, it captures that. But I see what you're saying, I would think that, oh, yes.
Yeah, I just, I don't, it, we should have a very narrow description, I think, that's all.
So let's pick that.
Okay.
What do you wanna do?
I, I would say, you know, um. Okay, there's. There's other types of affordable housing, but this would then apply to, that has nothing to do with two thousand and three, that we're about to pass, put into our table. I, I'm not sure why we need it.
So I think what we would wanna do is probably.
Again, why we need to the table, we already have.
Well, because it identifies the zone, I'm almost wondering, is if we have, uh. If we use one of those numbers.
Do you wanna put a footnote in and say, only as it applies to LD two thousand and three? That would be fine.
Let's do it.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying, down here, like.
I was, I think those.
I know, exactly.
We only, we only have nine of them already.
Let's do a ten.
Great.
And like round number.
What do you want it to say?
I don't know. He knew.
I would say, as, only as it applies to LD two thousand and three.
Only as it applies.
C, and C section two.
LD two thousand and three. D section.
And whatever section captured for the.
I'll, I'll put it in there.
Okay, thank you.
And then what, do you wanna do a asterisk up here, we need to.
Yeah, it would say.
Number ten.
Yeah, no, right, again, I didn't want it to be here.
And that would all, say ten.
I have a ten.
And then it would reference note ten.
Note ten.
Right, okay.
Can I say something before we move on? In definitions. Can I say that? I just wanna go backwards to one forty dash forty-six dash one.
Okay, hang on.
Or, wait, one, sorry, and I wanna say something.
One forty what?
We were just there, so accessory apartments.
Yeah.
I wanna, we need to change, so it matches the land use table. Because we updated the table to say accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah.
We need to change one forty dash forty-six point one to read, instead of accessory apartments, it needs to read accessory dwelling unit at the top of that.
Yeah.
So we can make that change, but also, but also, go to definitions.
Accessory apartment is now accessory dwelling unit?
Yep, ADU, that's what it is.
Thank you, I'm good with that?
Yep, and then.
Well, hang on a minute though, before you go too quick, accessory apartment, I, we just read that. Because there's also accessory use or structure.
Thank you.
And you wanna add the max from there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's what I wanna do, so I want it to be, the unit must have a minimum of one hundred and ninety square feet of living space. And a maximum of seven hundred and fifty, so I wanna go, the unit must have a minimum of one hundred and ninety square feet and a maximum of one, or seven hundred and fifty square feet of living space. Agree?
Sure. Wow, and the accessory used and stored below it is, like, could be, you know, five thousand square foot. You know, where you store your boat, I mean. There's no.
I, I, I.
Just forget it.
Not going to.
Let's move on, let's move on.
We do this all day long, Hershey. We should come hang out.
Yeah.
No, so we just, uh, agreed to changing the accessory apartment, accessory dwelling unit, and adding the seven fifty maximum. Which then corresponds to our change for money. Forty-six point one. And we put this one down here, on table A. And.
That's the part I've been working on, the changes that we wanted to specialize in, right, why you didn't hire it out?
He doesn't get it, either.
Where was the place where it was restricted?
Well, that's, uh.
Cause it's not under.
Oh, it's under the affordable housing definition.
Yeah, it's right below, right below the this far.
Right here.
Right, where's the red restriction, it says how your income, but it doesn't have a red restriction.
Um, it is.
It said, uh, number two?
Oh, there it is, without spending more than thirty percent on a house of multi-income, I know. Open housing.
Aaron, if you have any questions, you can go. I'd be happy to help.
Yeah, we want to remember.
That's, that's, that's for homes and houses.
I'll be helping that, he's a bit.
I don't know what you mean by that. Sorry, again, so under affordable housing, it says for rental housing, meaning I built it, I'm gonna rent it out, it's restricted, right? Okay, this is for open housing, I'm not sure what they mean by that, they need owner occupied housing, they need. I mean, somebody owns the other ones, what do they, what do they mean by own housing?
But it's the same thing. I, I understand the same. Still have, uh, but, uh.
Okay, all right. I just want, I wanna know. What, what do they mean by that? For own housing?
My understanding is, uh, did you have a development in housing, first, if it was their house.
They own their owners, okay.
Sorry, Greg. Sorry, Maddie.
Okay.
I think all that looks good, that's all pulled directly from the state. I'll be in need soon.
That they're so good at this, okay.
Moving on to the next item? All right, I just have one clarification I wanted to get. One forty dash forty-seven, line. Uh, one seventy-five? It's under the, the big affordable housing division, it's where we go on to.
Is it, is that recap, did they make a recap?
It does not.
It does not.
Have a red.
They've got a whole.
Oh, there we go.
Got it.
Yeah, uh, that's back. What, what, what do you mean?
Um, uh, just keep, it's one. Go forth your way backwards and hear this, you have.
Yeah, yeah.
Next page.
I just wanted to clarify on this, it says that this apartment shall allow structures of up to two dwelling units per lot.
There you have it.
If it does not contain an existing dwelling unit, except that it shall allow, allow up to four dwelling units per lot, if that allows not creating. An existing dwelling unit, the lot location that designated growth areas or.
What are you clarifying there?
Uh, so, I know that for the designated growth areas are the only ones that apply, but for. Um, is this changing the two dwelling unit for other property or other? Zones that aren't designated growths?
No, they have to be in the growth area.
So currently under the order. I'm gone, currently having governance right now, as long as you can meet the dimensional requirement, you can have two same family dwellings on the state, so planning. So that's already in our.
Okay.
It doesn't.
I haven't seen that now, affordable, the LD two, the three, so I didn't know.
It's really crazy.
What the hell? So it's basically, well, I'm not gonna do it, I'm gonna go another half plus half.
Nothing, they, yeah, they.
That's what I'm saying, so it almost depends. Yeah, the discussion on ADUs is kind of tough.
No, it's, but an ADU isn't another house.
It's two separate things.
Right, I know, but I, I understand.
You like to make.
But you're looking at it here, I'm gonna call it something different, and, oh, I'm gonna put two dwelling units on my house. Uh, so, I'm gonna have two regulars on it.
Yeah, you can, you can build that.
So, but, so my point is, we're talking about ADUs, you wanna call it something different, I'm gonna call that, and then I can go with her.
You, you're allowed to build two houses if you want, if you wanted an ADU, it should be, you can make it smaller.
No, I, I don't.
Okay.
The same, I think. Contradicts itself to.
You're right, there is some, there is some fuzzier in there, but I think an ADU is gonna look like what you said, it's gonna look like a basement apartment with a walkout, it's gonna look like you go go for your garage, it's gonna be addition at the back. Or cottage, it's not gonna be another family.
Yeah, you have a thousand square foot house, or adding eight hundred square feet to it.
I like your use in cottage.
It really depends on the size of your lot, really.
Right, you have, you have. But, but this almost, this sentence right there, it just. We wasted, just looking at it side by side, but I know they're two separate things.
Right, right.
Why, then, two way, probably problems, then, then we're processed, you know, through, obviously, it is really much easier.
Right, fair enough.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else?
I didn't see anything else.
You know, it's kind of interesting, so, uh, how about a motion to pass as an amendment by. So, move me.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
All right, can we move any further conversation? Even a little favor?
Bye.
Great, you'll take that, send that off to the council, they do that.
I'll grab the letter tomorrow, send it to you for.
Yeah, just get this done, keep it done, just, uh.
Love it.
Okay, uh, next. The home occupation.
Yeah. Where did this come from?
What do you mean?
Well, I, I, I don't, I don't remember ever having this sort of on our radar.
Though, there was meeting that we had, that we talked about it.
Okay.
And, is this on? Here.
It's not on, you need to cover that one.
Is that better?
Yes.
Um, so we talked about this at a meeting, we scheduled the workshop, and then we kind of got really busy. At the same work level.
Okay.
And we had some absences, so we should schedule a workshop for this.
Oh.
Or, talk about this further, or how you guys wanna handle it.
I, I would like to have a workshop on it. Yeah, and I would say, let's do that at a meeting that is. If the next meeting is what they can do light, and then we don't have any of the developments coming back, let's put it on. I, I, I do agree with Hershey, and now I do remember that we had a very brief conversation many months ago now. But I think your point is well taken, what precipitated this particular request or change?
I only put it on here, because we've been talking about it in our office for months, I pretty much since last time I started. And, we put it on, and I just don't wanna forget about it.
So, are further, uh, could you help, for purposes of this conversation? Could you help us under, and, and I'll back it up by saying, we went through a fairly lengthy process.
Like a whole year.
Well, we're worried that, when we went down the.
Very, you know, the plan of one, yes.
We set, kind of a separate set of provisions for them, where I have, they got additional square footage. And. I wanna be very cognizant of what we did here, there, and what we're hoping to do here. And, yeah, yeah, and not really contradicting ourselves in some of this, but. I, I wanna think about it some more, whether there's specific problems. That we need to be aware of as to why we, we want to, I mean, I honestly, I just simply, I'm sure they're all.
And, and Jen.
I just don't know.
In the, in the same vein, so we had a minor and a major.
Right.
And I think this is just the simple thought. So.
I know, well, for.
Together.
What?
Smashing them together.
But it, but it also, like, deletes certain parts that, uh, that you had, and not the marijuana, but in some that you didn't have.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why workshop would be good.
Yeah.
We can take both what we had and look at the view and make it updated there.
Is this regarding like this? Home-based business that is, I get it, uh, is this precipitated by, uh, the one out by, uh, main print? First of all, will be ones?
No.
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 It might be maybe.
There's some comment.
No.
That's actually a differentiation.
Okay, fair enough, then, then we'll, we'll, we'll wait for the thing and we'll talk about it, I'm just trying to.
Well, we can, what I want you guys to be, like, this is on the agenda because you guys just saw the market analysis, and in the market analysis. It shows that home-based business is crucial to bringing business to our town, he said it here tonight.
Yeah.
So, that's why this is on the agenda, and I'll have a workshop about it, I'd love to walk, work through it, this has nothing to do with any specific businesses here in town. That have come before you or will come before you, this is just to update if we can, further.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any further, so let's send it up for the next meeting, guys.
Yep.
Remind them we don't have any other heavy items.
Can I, can I ask, um, is there a way to ask the name first, is there? On home businesses in town, so then we already know how many people conduct home businesses, we have any, so. Like, what type, how much space, anything we can get our hand on would be great.
It is so great you asked that question, because we had a tenth admin here in our office, Martha, we love her, Martha, we love Martha. She put together an entire business listing here in town. And there's like three hundred and, I don't know, don't quote them, there's like three hundred and sixteen businesses that are here in town. But I can definitely get that for you, any data you want, we already have it on it, there's.
Right.
Ready to go?
It'd be great, it'd be great to. I think that kind of, you know, educators, in terms of what their needs and requirements are.
Well, they, they're gonna, they're gonna vary greatly, depending on whether they're, I mean, some are, I don't know, agriculture relates to home business to the same extent that, that we're comparing.
Now, when I look at this word footage, that would be honest with that, and yeah, there is.
Well, that was the only thing. But one other thing, like, you know.
One thing I would like to bring up, and it might be a good idea, might be a bad idea. And Greg, I feel like you've said this before, and I thought it was a good idea when you said it, is maybe trying to figure out what classifieds this is.
Yeah.
What is the one thing for this?
Right, we don't really. Right, we don't really know.
Well, I, it's not just like I work at home, that's not the business, I'm just, working remotely.
You need to understand what we're being asked to regulate, including, and what, what are, I think, starting with that inventory that exists. If we could just get a hold of that, just, that would be, it'd be great, just to kind of know, oh, I never thought of that, or, oh, I didn't know this was actually there.
Let me just give you a big example.
Yeah.
Somebody who has a lot of water, heater, separator, is that a home-based business? No.
So that's a.
But that is something that I have to determine on a daily basis, whether I can give a home, is it licensed to that or not. So if we could tighten up the ordinance a little bit on home-based business, kind of have an overview of what we consider a home-based business. That would be, which we call home occupation, by the way.
Yeah.
It would be wonderful.
I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, because you're, you know, again, you're talking, use that example. You know, uh, a small mechanic. But in, but in the residential zone, you know, you could be dealing with a lot of other ancillary issues there. Do I don't want a separator, what happens if that goes bad?
And also, it's already a separate use in, under, right, under a list of uses, there are some things that are already separated in uses that have. Other particular like pressure, right, it's not a home occupation. Somebody could say this, but I wouldn't call that, and it's listed as a separate use, so there's a bunch of things that we would have to then look at.
And we don't wanna give a home occupation license for special use permit, which is what we have here in town, for business that should be in front of the land anymore.
Right, right.
I heard you.
Right, you know, I, I. I'm happy, I, I, don't get me wrong, I'm happy to look at it.
You too.
Because we've been talking about this kind of stuff, updating your work, this is, I think it's.
Thank you.
So, no, let's, let's, let's dig into that.
Do we, we just set a date for the workshop there? Or do we wanna do it on email? Put a new email address?
Well, I think we said if everybody's okay, if it's a workshop, just set it at the next meeting, provided.
Well, assuming we don't, we don't have, okay, that's fine.
Do we know when it's coming up?
Yeah.
For the next agenda?
Yeah.
Right now, there's nothing on the.
And it's a perfect opportunity to get.
We have a, some, we have something else for third party review, if we repeat that back, then that will be a place on the agenda, as of right now, there's nothing on.
And even if we get that third party review, just to discuss the contents of that third party review.
Yep.
Which would then elicit a further conversation, like with Samville, down the road.
Wonderful, and this is a long one, so we'll get an extra review.
Alright, uh, any member comment? No, uh, is there a motion to your turn?
I motion your turn.
I second, all favor?
Aye.